Please rise to salute the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to this flag, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under our own indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'll now call the roll of the city council members. Councilor Naomi Zabat.
Present.
Councilor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Todd Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Giovanni Recupro.
Here.
Councilor Leo Robinson.
Here.
Councilor Calvin Brown.
Present.
Councilor Damali Vidal.
Present.
Councilor Melinda Vega is absent. Councilor Ymir Rodriguez. Present, I see him. Councilor Roy Avellaneda, present. Councilor Ennio Lopez.
Here.
That's ten, present, one absent. Okay. At this time, we'll, uh, next item on the agenda is memorandums and celebratory resolutions. I have a resolution here introduced by Councilor Roy Avellaneda. Whereas in July 2019, the Chelsea Inspection Services Department was made aware of a possible code violation at a property located at 58 Parker Street, and whereas it was discovered that the owner, Betty McDonald, had instead been a victim of a miscreant contractor. Whereas it was discovered that the contractor was unlicensed, had spent Mrs. McDonald's $78,000 to pay for supplies and repairs elsewhere, and had also dumped on Mrs. McDonald's property tons of debris from other work sites, and whereas with the assistance of the Chelsea Police Department, Massachusetts Attorney General, the contractor is being persecuted. And whereas Mrs. McDonald did not have the funds to have the debris removed and could not have much needed work done until it was removed, and whereas Capic, IBE Local 103, became involved and contacted Daigle Electrical Construction Corp., a Massachusetts and New Hampshire based electrical contractor, who had its seven employees, had its employees volunteer seven hours on Wednesday, October 17th, and cleaned up Mrs. McDonald's property. Therefore, let it be resolved that the city council, city of Chelsea, and its residents recognize and are thankful for the kind assistance of the owners and employees of Daigle Electrical Construction Corp., provided to Chelsea resident Betty McDonald. What is the will of the council?
Suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Um, at this time, I'll recognize, uh, I'll let the Vice President take the chair so I can speak on this. From there, if you wanted to, from there.
Chairwoman recognizes Councilor Avellaneda.
Thank you. Um, to my colleagues, I was made aware of this situation from, uh, Capic, who was working with Miss McDonald, and we hear a lot of this going on. I've seen it before, and I'm sure maybe you have, where a homeowner, in this particular case, an elderly homeowner, contracted, an unlicensed contractor unfortunately, and paid a large sum of money, $78,000, to begin work. And rather than do the job that he was hired to do, instead, he used that money in other projects, and worse, started to work and then brought a ton of materials, literally tons of material, to Mrs. McDonald's property, and unknowingly to her, because she wasn't mobile and able to see her backyard, had dumped all this debris from other work sites onto her property. The neighbors had contacted ISD and stated that they thought this was a hoarding situation. When Mike McAtier and his inspectors went to the property, they discovered truly what had happened. And they worked with Chelsea Police Department and also involved Capic. She tried to assist this homeowner who had been defrauded. It's, I'd like to point out or recognize Officer Guido, who was the investigator on this issue, who made sure with the information provided that they went after this guy, and he actually went to jail. He unfortunately got out because of COVID situations, but he did spend some time for this crime against one of our Chelsea residents. And this is where the great story begins. There was no way that Miss McDonald was going to be able to pay to have all this debris moved, removed, especially after she just lost $78,000. And the IBE Local contacted one of their local companies that are members of the union, electrical union, and they spent a whole day to go into the property at their own cost time to bring in a dumpster and remove all of that debris. So we have a somewhat happy ending to this in the fact that Miss McDonald was able to get some assistance. And because of Capic bringing this up to me, I just wanted to recognize the company and its employees for the great work that was done, the volunteerism. You know, I'm happy to hear that Miss McDonald got some resolution here, not made whole, but somewhat a little bit of justice served. And again, um, if there's one story to be made of this or a lesson learned is again, please, if anyone is thinking about doing any work at their home, please make sure that you are working with a licensed contractor. That, that way, if there's anything going on funny, they will, one, not only never be able to do work here, but there are avenues of justice being served if that happens. So again, I know a lot of people go out there and try to do the best they can and get a cheaper price when it comes to home repairs, but do your due diligence and make sure you're working with someone who's licensed. And I just want to thank again the employees of Daigle Electric, even though they're not a Chelsea company, they're out in Lowell, that they were willing to come down here to help somebody out. Thank you.
Great. Chairwoman recognizes Councilor Brown.
Thanks, ma'am, hi, President. I'd also like to thank Capic and IBW Local 103 for coming to the assistance of this 78-year-old senior in a very dire need of help. It's very difficult when you trust folks and you got work that the city's asking you to get done, and you try to go out and do the right thing, and you find out that you're in a bad situation. So I would like to just thank Capic and thank IBFW for their assistance, their helping her, and also I'd like to wish her her very best outcome as she moves forward to continue to do the work that she liked to do for her property over on Parker Street.
We'll now move on to seeing no other speakers. We'll now move on, that one, that motion passes under suspension. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Councilor Judith Garcia.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and file the minutes of our last meeting if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, that item is accepted. That motion is adopted. We now moving on to communications. Communications from the city manager. Communication received from city manager in regards to water and sewer savings. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting an update on the city's projection that it would save approximately $350,000 in FY '21, based upon the transition from RH White to an in-house water and sewer department. The city's projection of savings from this transition was based upon a simple formula we have presented in April of 2019. At that time, we informed the city council that if we were to retain RH White as our contractor for 2021, the total contract cost would be $1,784,975. In comparison to that number, the April 2019 projection to the council indicated that once we brought water and sewer in-house, our additional city costs would only be $1,429,261.45, thereby generating savings of $355,713.55. A copy of that April 2019 projection is attached. The April 2019 projection turned out to be conservative. In June of 2020, when we actually submitted to the city council our final FY '21 water and sewer budget, the additional costs to the city were far less than we originally projected. Specifically, we submitted an FY '21 water and sewer enterprise budget with no new costs to the city, resulting from a transfer of only $998,707.35, not the previous number as the year before. The projected savings would therefore increase at the high end of $786,267.65. In large part, this difference was due to the fact that, instead of operating the system with 13 new employees, we proposed in FY '21 to operate the system with only 10 new employees. This was mainly due to the economic constraints imposed by COVID-19. Operating in this lean fashion is not an ideal solution. I do expect to recommend a 13 employee contingent, as originally envisioned, once the economic situation improves, and certainly no later than FY '23. Finally, I do not anticipate that we will secure the full, secure the full $786,267.65 in savings in FY '21, because certain of our, certain of our costs may be higher than anticipated. Overtime is one such line item that may end up higher than originally expected. But even with some anticipated cost overruns, we are confident that at the end of FY '21, our savings will far exceed the original estimate of $355,713.55. What is the wish of the council? Council Robinson asked that we accept and file the communication.
I'd just kind of be, be brief. I, I see these numbers, I guess when, I'm looking at when you start a new business, you start at zero.
Council Robinson, can you speak closer into the mic? Thank you.
In regards to, when you start a new business, you start at zero. I know we bought out this company and we had savings. And I was under the assumption from year one, we were going to look at what it was going to cost us and figure out what we were going to be saving. So maybe I was kind of thinking about a little differently than what was presented to me. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Are there any other questions from any of the councilors on this issue? Seeing none, we're moving along to the next communication that was accepted under suspension. Communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to Mace Totlot appropriation request. Dear councilors, I'm writing to you with an update on the city's pending park grant submission for the renovation of the Mace Totlot and request that the city council approve the necessary funding for this project. Recently, the city was notified by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, that the park grant has been temporarily awarded pending execution of the state grant contract and fulfillment of all pre-award program requirements. For this grant, the proposed renovations of the Mace Totlot include replacement of the playground's rubber surface, surfacing, introduction of new playground equipment, and installation of a new water feature and splash pad, installation of a new site furniture and lighting, and reconstruction of all site utilities. Once completed, the modernized playground will serve better our city's youth and increase quality of life for residents, a goal highlighted in the city's 2017 Open Space and Recreation Plan. The city will complete its design of these improvements by June 30th, 2021. The design process will include coordination with park users, neighborhood residents, and other stakeholders. Already, an initial public meeting has been convened. We anticipate holding two additional public meetings to gather resident input on design features and park amenities during the winter and spring of 2021. Reconstruction of the playground will occur during fiscal year 2022 and hopefully be completed by June 30th, 2022. Prior to the commencement of construction, a public informational meeting will be held to inform residents about construction. As a reminder, the park grant program operates as follows. The Commonwealth pays 70% of the cost of the park improvements, up to a maximum state share of $400,000. However, the park grant is a reimbursement grant. This means that the city spends the funds for the project and then requests reimbursement from the Commonwealth. Per park grant guidelines, the city is required to appropriate the full cost, or 100% of the total cost, in advance to order the execute a contract with EEA. Based upon the city's estimate, the total cost of the Mace Totlot improvements will be $750,000. To date, the city council has appropriated $350,000 through the FY '21 Capital Improvement Project, leaving this balance of $400,000, which we expect to be fully reimbursed, reimbursed, by the Commonwealth. In the event that this park ultimately costs more than the estimate, which is not uncommon, I may return to the city council for further appropriation. Conversely, if there are any remaining funds from this project, I am requesting authority to utilize them on a future park-funded projects. For this, for all the reasons set above, I respectfully request that the city council approve this appropriation. I've attached a draft resolution in order. Because of this park grant requires an appropriation vote no later than December 31st, 2020, the only funds available are stabilization funds. Free cash will likely not be certified until early 2021. Councilor Robinson?
Case under suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted under suspension. Communication received by the city manager in regards to take-home vehicles. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the most recent city council request for a report on take-home vehicles. The rationale for take-home vehicles is that certain employees are required by virtue of their position to respond to emergencies on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week basis. For this reason, they are allowed to have a city vehicle at home for that purpose. There are a handful of departments that have take-home vehicles. In ISD and E911, the sole take-home vehicle is utilized by the respective department head. In police, fire, and DBW, there are multiple positions that require emergency response and thus qualify for take-home vehicles. I have attached a list of all take-home vehicles by department and included the gas usage during calendar year 2020. For most of the positions on the list, the vehicle is required to be used solely to go back and forth to work and for emergency response, and is not allowed for off-duty use. Exceptions for general off-duty use exist for the Chelsea Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the Deputy Chief of Operations, and the 911 Director, the ISD Director and Public Works Commissioner, and Assistant Public Works Commissioner. These exceptions are in place to allow these most senior officials to respond to an emergency scene as quickly as possible without returning home to exchange vehicles. Please let me know if you have, if you require any further information on the issue. Chair recognizes Councilor Recupro.
I'd like to send this to subcommittee to talk more about it. Because from what I see here, these vehicles are supposed to be used as a, a take, a portal to go back and forth, but as I'm looking at some of this gas prices, it's unreal. Like, the 911 guy, I don't mean to say anybody, but there's people in here, right, that are using this car all day long. That's not what they're supposed to do. The whole purpose of this car is supposed to be emergency. They're supposed to go back from A to B and use it while they're working. But it seems like, as I'm looking at this, it seems there's more and more, they're using these cars for everyday use. And why should the taxpayers pay for a car everyday use? Everybody would like to have a car for free and don't pay for nothing, but everybody can't. So, why should they be allowed to? I can understand for some of them that are emerged, they have to use it, but some of them, like, why do you need it to use it 24 hours a day? That's not, the, the purpose of these cars are called portal cars. They're supposed to go from A to B, take you from your house to your job, and then use it. So I would like to send it to a subcommittee and talk about it even more, to explain to me why this is going on, and if we can save some money on these cars. Do we need all these cars? Do we need to work that way? That's not what they're supposed, that's, the intent of these cars wasn't for their, their use, they're using it now. So, is that okay if I send it to subcommittee?
Is there any objection to the councilor sending this to subcommittee? Seeing none, that will be sent to subcommittee on conference.
Thank you.
At this time, I must ask for forgiveness. I see that I skipped over, on, with, deeply embarrassed, the portion of the public speaking portion. We went right from the resolution to the acceptance of meetings, acceptance, acceptance of regular meeting minutes from November 2nd. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak publicly, to please step up, state your name and address, and address the council. You have five minutes. Uh, go to the behind the podium, over there.
Hello. So I'm the resident and the owner of 72 Grove Street. And my proposal is that I wanted to see if it'd be possible to do something about the parking on Grove Street. I, it's a little tight. I purchased my house earlier this year, and I, I think that the sidewalk is long enough, correct me if I'm wrong, to make, to maybe cut it to where you could have parking on both sides of the street. Yeah, this is my first meeting, and I, I, that's my, my proposal. I note if you, are all of you pretty familiar with the street? Yeah, it has like this little zig, and I think a lot of residents have like a hard time finding parking, so they'll leave their car over the curb for like long periods of time, and it's, um, yeah. If, if we could find a more efficient way to use the space, I think it'd be great.
Could you just restate your name and address for the record?
Brian Martinez, I'm the owner and resident of 72 Grove.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And just for public, for public notice or information, any resident looking to make a change or would like to see a change in any parking, simply needs to write an email or a letter to the Parking Commission, and that item will be put forth on their agenda, at which they'll be notified when they can speak on it. But I encourage any council, any residents to also contact their district council via email who can forward that communication to the Parking Commission on their behalf also. Okay, now moving back to the communications from the city manager. I am moving on to communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to a notice of waiver of intent. I see, what, wait a minute, you're right. I have municipal electric aggregation here, sorry. Dear councilors, I am writing with an update in our development of municipal electric aggregation program. At this point, there is no action required by the city council. This is for informational purposes only. First, we have to name our program, Chelsea Electric Choice, Optional Electrica de Chelsea. And with the help of our constituents, consultants, we have developed a draft aggregate, aggregation plan. This is a document, is a high-level authorization document that outlines the structure of the city's program and how it will meet regulatory requirements. Launching this program requires approval of the aggregation plan by the Department, Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, DPU. Prior to submitting the aggregation plan to DPU, the city is required to make the aggregation plan, the accompanying education and outreach plan, and the city's draft model Electricity Service Act agreement available for public review and comment. To kick off a three-week public preview, review rather, and a comment period, a public presentation of the aggregation plan has been scheduled for Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, at 6:00 PM. The aggregation plan and these associated documents will remain available for public review and comment until December 22, 2020. The education and outreach plan details how Chelsea electricity customers will be educated about the program and their rights within it. The public presentation of the aggregation will be publicized in accordance with the education and outreach plan. An efforts on publicity will include a press release, social media postings, emails, and special outreach to constituent groups. The public will be able to access the aggregation plan online and at City Hall, and they will be able to submit comments via email and US mail. Following the conclusion of the public comment period, Chelsea will submit the aggregation plan for regulatory review. As previously promised, before submission of, to the DBU, I will return to the city council for a vote seeking approval to file the proposed aggregation plan with the DBU. No aggregation plan will be submitted to the DPU without the city council's express approval. I do want to remind the city council about the process following any city council vote to approve submission of the aggregation plan. After a plan is submitted to the DBU, it may take as much as six months for approval. Following DPU approval, the city will then, through a formal RFP process, solicit competitive bids for a municipal electrical supplier. Once an electric supplier is selected and a, and a contract executed, then the city will notify by mail all members of the community who have ever sourced basic service, meaning they have not signed a contract with a different electricity supplier, that they are eligible for automatic enrollment in the city's new program. The city will include information about program prices, program options, and the current ever-source basis, basic service prices and customers' rights within the program. All customers who are eligible for automatic enrollment will have the opportunity to opt out before the switch. The letter will include information on how to do so. Further, the city will ensure that customers will be able to opt out at any time thereafter without penalty. For the city council's convenience, I am attaching the draft aggregation plan, which includes draft mailing materials for the communication just described, the education and outreach plan, and the draft model electricity service agreement. These will be made available for public review and comment. What is the will of the council?
Communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
Council Garcia asked that this be adopted under suspension. Are there any objections? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the communication received from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino, in regards to notice of waiver intent. Dear councilors, pursuant to Administrative Code 112-02, I am writing to notify you of my intention to promote Mr. Benjamin Kears, 5 Cutter Park, Somerville, Massachusetts, as the position of Senior Planner/Project Manager in the Department of Housing and Community Development, and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part 4, Section 1-12 dot 01. Mr. Kears has been employed by the city for two years and has been an exemplary employee. A copy of Mr. Kears' resume is attached. In accordance to Section 1-12-02, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days. What is the wish of the council?
To accept and file communication under suspension, if there are no objections. And I wish to briefly speak on it.
Councilor Garcia asked that it be accepted under suspension. You have the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Avellaneda. I am actually very excited to see how Mr. Ben Kears is moving up the ranks here in Chelsea. Personally, I know that he's been with us for a few years now, and his work has been absolutely remarkable, especially during this pandemic. So I'm very excited for, to, to see a promotion and definitely to, to approve this, this residency waiver.
Thank you. Moving on. Moving on, we have no committee reports. We have number nine, unfinished business. I have an unfinished business by Council Robinson being asked to be pulled out. Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of funds in the amount of $300,000 for the Chelsea Stabilization Fund, number 7020, to FY '21, Housing and Community Development Department Housing Rehabilitation Fund, number 3090, for a housing rehabilitation program eligible to Chelsea households in all areas of the city who earn up to 100% of the area median income. Councilor Recupro asked for this to be pulled. You're allowed to speak. You're allowed to speak.
I'd like to take that on, we have a roll call vote on it.
We were, there's a motion to take it off, it was laid on the table.
No.
And also out of conference. Yeah, it was a conference, conference pulling out of conference. At this, and you're asking for a roll call vote, any, would you like to speak on it?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak on it?
Not really, we all know what it is. Okay, I'll speak on it, if it's, I'll speak on it. This program is to help homeowners who can't afford to fix their house, more or less to help them. The money that comes from this program, this doesn't come from taxpayers' money. It comes from Massport, which the city is gonna pay, put it forth now. But then when Massport pays back the money to them, that the money comes from them. So it's gonna help a lot of homeowners that wouldn't qualify to get their house fixed, especially at these times where they do need to get something fixed. So it's a good thing because it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money and it helps the taxpayer. It's one of these programs where the taxpayer doesn't really contribute to it. It comes out of a fund that Massport gives to the city. So it's a good thing that at least some homeowners will be able to use it to help them fix their houses. It's a good thing. So I hope that my fellow councilors will vote for it and then give it a chance for homeowners to fix their house in, in these bad times that we're having right now. Thank you very much.
Any other councilors want to speak on this matter? Counsel Robinson?
Just a couple, couple quick notes, because I think we did have a conference, we made some things clear. The City Housing Rehab Program would be open to owner occupied, 1 to 4 unit properties. Eligibles must have an annual household income at or below the income limit set by the City Council. In order to participate, applicants must be below the income limits and remain in good standing with the city. No outstanding citations, unpaid tax fees or bills. Then it would be an inspection or a work write-up with any homeowner looking to be getting any financing. Typically, when the owner approves the scope and agrees the amount of terms of financing, then the project manager drafts a loan agreement and promissory note to memorialize the financing. Then the project is put out to bid to qualify contractors. During construction, a conference is held with the project manager, housing rehab specialist, contractor, homeowner. The pre-construction conference affords all parties an opportunity to discuss the scope of work, the project budget scheduling, logistics of the coordination. And the financing structure, which we touched a little bit on in the conference, qualified owner occupants of 1 or 4 family properties will be offered forgivable 0% 15-year deferred payment loans with anti-speculative payback provisions included within their agreements with the city. Under these provisions, they must agree to restrict rental charges and increase as per the anti-speculation and recapture plan. Also, if properties are sold within the 15-year term or if the owner occupant ceases to occupy the property as their primary residence or in an event of a cash-out refinance where there is a transfer of title, the loans will be accelerated and come due immediately. The loan funds returned to the city may be used to either assist additional qualified families or to support other eligible community development activities. I just kinda wanted to make that clear, so.
Any other councilors have any comments? Seeing none, I'll now take the role. A yes vote will approve the appropriation of funds of $300,000 for the Housing Stabilization Fund. Counsel Naomi Zabat?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia? Counselor Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero? Counselor Leah Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Damali Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Veger is absent. Counselor Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Roya Vigeneda, yes. Counselor Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
10 in favor, none against, one absent. A motion carries. Moving on to new business. We have requests introduced by Counselor Garcia for a Subcommittee on Conference with the Director of Housing and Community Development to discuss an action plan as evictions loom, loom post-moratorium. Counselor requests, so Counselor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Avellaneda. I wish to, my motion is to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it.
You may speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as we have seen this evening, we've had several conversations on how to address the housing crisis in our city, especially how to extend the help, not only to our renters, but now we're shifting gears and focusing on homeowner assistance. And as we just saw now, we just took a vote in a very positive direction, which is to help many homeowners deal with reparations to their structures. But reality is that this pandemic has left a long-lasting impact in our community and we know that it's added more to the housing crisis. And unfortunately, as an MIT study and a study that was actually developed by MIT and Vida Urbana City Life, 1 in every 3 renter households in Massachusetts is at risk of eviction during this pandemic. And considering that the moratorium expired on October 18, I know that the impact in communities like Chelsea that are predominantly Hispanic, that are predominantly black, are going to be impacted at the highest levels. And the city has made incredible strides to address the situation early on by creating a rental assistance program. Now, we're making different strides to continue to help our homeowners. But I would like to see this ad hoc response be more concentrated and that's why I am calling the Subcommittee to invite not only our Director of Housing and Community Development, but possibly invite key stakeholders in our community that include community-based organizations to help us develop a long-term response plan to this crisis. We know that this pandemic has become our new normal. The idea is the impact that this pandemic is having and the negative externalities this pandemic is having in our community will be long-lasting, specifically for our housing situation here. The last thing I want to see is many of our tenants and vulnerable families lose their homes and end up homeless. So I'd like to have this proactive discussion. I'd like to hear what is our Director of Housing and Community Development's Director's vision of how the city is planning to address this? And perhaps if there's any room for collaboration and partnership with the community-based organizations in our community like Green Roots, like the Chelsea Collaborative, like the Neighborhood Developers, to come together and address it comprehensively and cohesively all together. So I hope that all of you can join us in this conversation and I hope it's a very productive one as we, you know, engage in trying to figure this out together. Thank you.
Counselor Vido, would you like to speak on the, your work on this subject matter? With the displacement group, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Counselor Garcia, there's currently, there's a group of nonprofits that involve the Chelsea Collaborative, CAPPIC, Green Roots, Counselor Avellaneda and I, I'll sit on it, it's the Anti-Displacement Table. I'm one of the original founders, we started it maybe about two years ago. And so it is a collaborative effort with City Life Vida Urbana, Greater Boston Legal Services. And basically, we're all working exactly what you're, what you're suggesting. We're trying to figure out how do we address this housing issue that we have here? And we're putting all of our heads together. We've met with the Governor, we've met with members of the Health and Human Service Department, the Community Development Team to talk about these things. So I, I, I don't, I, I think that you, what you're talking about is absolutely falls in line with what we're saying. I just feel that we all need to kinda come, be added to the table as opposed to kinda starting from scratch and, and, and starting something that we are, we're already working on. There should be a way that we can all work together, whether it's that you invite the Anti-Displacement Table to the Subcommittee and then we have a more, a larger conversation, or I'd invite you to come and attend one of our meetings so that you can see some of the things that we, that are already on the pipeline that we're working on with respect to this housing crisis. Thank you.
If I may speak from the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I want to echo Counselor Vido's efforts the last two years that she created the displacement team and the, all those individuals and entities are working right now. And I think I suggest that you get invited to the group so you're part of the discussion. And any other councilors who would like to join, I welcome. I would say to, you know, reach out to Caroline Ellenberg, who can, you know, set it up so you are invited to the discussion. They've been working diligently. And the last conversation was a letter preparation to see if we could increase funding to Chelsea of upwards of $10 million additional above what the City Managers already requested, or rather, rather, a higher number. And particularly, I think it's about increasing RAF payment abilities in our community. For those who are not familiar with this, RAF payment is you apply to the Transition Assistance Program and they help you pay for a couple of months of rent. So that's the lobbying that's been going on behind the scenes. And again, as Counselor Vido stated, rather than try to start a new conversation inside City Hall, this, this group has been meeting for the last two years. Better to just join that conversation. And Alex Train is on that committee, so is Carl Allen. So these discussions have been had. And I just want to recognize Counselor Vido's work on this. And so say that rather than do duplicitous work and bring these up, just to invite you to that table. And again, any councilors willing to join, I ask you to, yes.
And it's more of a comment than an inquiry. I understand and I really value the, the steps that everyone has taken to be a part of the Anti-Displacement Committee, but I think it would be helpful for this body, that's a governmental body who has been making several ad hoc decisions on how to create different funds to have this conversation. It's not about creating a committee, it's not about establishing something new. It's about, we have a Director of Community Development and Housing in-house that's already running several different programs, which I wouldn't say it's ad hoc, I'm sure that there's been a lot of benefit from the conversations that this Anti-Displacement Organization Commission Committee that's been created separately from the city. However, these are substantial conversations that this body should at least have a vision, a track record of what the vision is of our Director to understand what our role as government is and will continue to be in the next five years. So it's clearly not trying to mitigate or minimize anyone else's work and especially not Counselor Vido's or yourselves or, or anyone else of this Anti-Displacement Committee. It's a matter of us as a government body to know where we can go next as a government body and continue to support some of these efforts. So I still want to hold this Subcommittee because I think it's important for my colleagues, including myself, to have an understanding where our in-house efforts are, aside from this Anti-Displacement Table. They're completely invited to attend if you want to add to the conversation and showcase your work, but this is a conversation that needs to happen in-house. So, thank you. And Counselor Taylor wants to be recognized.
Counselor Todd Taylor? Counselor Todd Taylor?
I, I agree with Counselor Garcia that this is a conversation that needs to happen within the Council itself. And while I may applaud your efforts to kind of get the ball rolling with other stakeholders in the community, that's great. But I think that the rest of the Council needs to be included in, you know, this conversation. So I would, I would be for sending this to Subcommittee and inviting the members of your committee to fill us in on what you've already come up with and then we can kind of go from there and see what else can be done. I, I think there's only so many resources locally that exist to address this problem. So I think part of the solution to this is gonna have to be going to the state, federal government for, for more funding. I, I definitely agree with asking the state for more funding because Chelsea is, you know, habitually underfunded for a variety of reasons.
Okay, anyone else like to speak on this?
Can I just add something, Counselor Vigeneda?
Counselor Vido?
Thank you. I just, I just want to just say, I don't think it's an either/or, I think it's a and, right? It's, it's how do we work together to, to address this issue? So I thought it would have been easier for Counselor Garcia to go over there, but I, I, but I think it also makes sense for the Anti-Displacement Roundtable to come in. This is an issue that is systematic, that comes from up top. There is absolutely no way, as Counselor Taylor said, that we're going to be able to address it. So the fact that we have more people in the conversation is exactly the direction that we need to be moving in because these issues are just exacerbated, these housing, this housing prices. And it just seems to just be ramping up quite fast. So I, I hope that we can schedule it sooner than later and I, I'm excited for everyone that's excited about this conversation.
Great, so we move to schedule soon.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is an order request introduced by Counselor Garcia that the Traffic and Parking Commission to look at Intermaking 3rd Street from Pearl Street to Chestnut Street, offering parking on both sides. What is the wish of the Counselor?
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it briefly.
Counselor Garcia asked this to be adopted under suspension, are there any other, any objections? Seeing none, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Avellaneda. So this is specifically for the Traffic and Parking Commission as they are the only ones who can make decisions on parking. But this was a conversation that I've been having with our Commissioner, our Public Works Commissioner, along with some of the residents in this area who would like to see some sort of relief in terms of, of more parking options in, in this specific area. Again, it's an exploratory conversation, it's something that we thought would be helpful and it would improve the quality of life for these specific residents. So exploratory conversation, hoping to see Traffic and Parking Commission and hear their input and see if this is a viable option. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Seeing none, moving on to the next order. The order introduced by Counselor Vido. Order asks that the City Manager ask the Law Department prepare a report on Chelsea Police Department use of force for the past three years. Counselor Vido?
Move to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
Any objections? Seeing none, would you like to speak on this?
I guess just briefly, because I don't want, I, I just wanted to be clear that we had some testimony with folks that came up and spoke to us about what their experience had been with race and that, and that sort of thing. And so, you know, there were a lot of, there was folks that shared stories about, about having negative interactions with the police. And then we have, you know, we constantly have arguments that this isn't something that we see here in Chelsea. So I just want to just, just do, just doing my due diligence and making sure that we're, we're getting any records that may be out there and hopefully it'll prove that, you know, we have the best police force in the entire state. So it's just, it's just more just research, nothing else driving it. Thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vido that the City Manager provide a report detailing the procurement process and timeline specifically as it relates to requests for services, contracting services. Counselor Vido?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to adopt this unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections, and I'll speak on it quickly.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Basically, just, it's one of the things that we really don't pay attention to. We tend to deal with, you know, with, with residents and, and, and stuff on the front end. And it's just something, I just want to make sure that the back of the store is clean and what's going on back there and what the process is. And I want to understand it a little bit, a little more intimately. Procurement is a process that quite frankly, it's kind of, it's a gray area. And so I just want to understand what, if I am a contractor, what can I expect? What is, what level of service can I expect in dealing with the city of Chelsea? Again, more research, just trying to understand the city a little bit more intimately. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request introduced by Counsel Recupero and Counsel Lopez that the City Manager to instruct the DBW Director to retrofit existing barrels outside with tops and locks. And in the future, when the city purchases the barrels, to also purchase tops and locks. Counsel Recupero?
I'd like to adopt, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
A couple of years ago, I put in for these barrels to be put outside so people won't have to throw the trash in the streets. It was a good, it's a good thing. It still is a great thing. So it will make our city cleaner. But what's going on is the people now, because these barrels don't, and are retrofitted with tops, people are throwing household garbage inside of them. And they're throwing rocks, throwing all kinds of things inside. So a good thing is becoming a bad thing, but it should be a good thing. So what I'm asking for the city manager to do is, or and DPW Director, me and Counselor Lopez, is to put tops with locks. So people can open them up and throw the bags inside. They can only throw small, small stuff that would, instead of throwing it on the street, you would throw it on inside of these containers. So that's it. And I hope that they find, they retrofit them. Instead of buying all new ones, just fit, put tops on them. It's a good thing. Because the barrels is a good thing for the people. It, it's good for the environment. It's good for all of us. Less trash in the street you see, the better you, place you live. And you live in a happier environment. Thank you.
Counsel Anya Lopez?
Counsel President, yes, I have been getting complaints that people even are bringing their own trash and dump it in these trash barrels. And also, I have seen debris that people who do construction have thrown in there. So what we need is, I see in other cities like Cambridge and Boston, they got covers on top that the only people who can open is DPW. So we want something like that over here in Chelsea. So that way, maybe we alleviate that, that people are throwing all the stuff, or their own trash on, on these barrels. These barrels are just for, you know, if you eat something from the store, you throw your bottle, your can or whatever it is, but no trash full of bag, I mean, bag full of trash. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, order introduced by city man, by, sorry, Counsel Recupero, that the city manager and the city manager instruct the Director of Housing and Community Development to look into acquiring a park grant to fix the existing Quigley Park on Essex Street. What is the wish of the council? Counsel Recupero? Seeing no objection. Counsel Recupero, you have the floor.
Okay. I hate to say what I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it anyways. Because it's the truth. The truth needs to be spoken. A long time, about four years ago, they did this park, or five years ago. The average park gets between a half a million dollars and up. This park only go 250,000. They didn't do nothing to this park. This park is still the same as it was. And the only reason why they did something to it, because I complained because the walls were falling off and people were falling. So they, they, they fixed that, and they spent that much money in this park. And it's nothing to do with the city manager we have now. But I think the former city manager didn't do what he was supposed to. Maybe because the area that it's in, it's predominantly Hispanic and poor, or whatever it is. For that particular reason, I can't understand why every park in this city gets a lot of money, and that park gets no money. And in that area, it's, it's full of children, all kinds of children. And the park hasn't been, if you go back to the same thing, it's the same things that have for 15 years, 20 years. They have never changed anything to it. They just painted it and left it alone. I believe that all of us that live in this city are equal, no matter where you live and what you are. So if a, a park gets all kinds of money, the other parks should get the same. If a park gets retrofitted with new toys for kids, new games, new things to do, another park should be the same. It shouldn't just be left alone with all the stuff that's there and never do nothing to it. That's kind of unfair. I know life is not fair. Nothing is fair in this world. But I'm in a position to speak on it and let you know how I feel, that my area is just as good as any other area of the city. And it needs attention, just like any other place. So if a park is around getting a half a million dollars, my park should get the same, or it should get the equivalent of making it just as good as anywhere else. That's all I have to say. And I hope that the park, which gets, the state gives them the money, will turn around and give some money to redo this park. It's about time this park gets done. It needs to be the equivalent to every other park. There's lots of children there. It's the only one they have in a small, in an area that's crowded. There's no other park in that area. But, and it, it serves a lot of kids. So I hope that the city manager tells the park director, whatever, to go in and put in to get this park done. This park needs attention. It doesn't need to be the way it is. It needs to be equal to the same as the other parks. Thank you.
Counselor Vido?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe the work on Quigley Park predates me. I don't think I was on the council when, when that decision was made. So I don't feel comfortable making any comments as far as how much money was allocated there. But I, I am curious. Since I have been here, we have worked on other parks. And I know that there was a mention of us working on the Mace Todd Lot. I thought that park belonged to Chelsea Housing. But I see how small that park is. And to think of all the money that is going into that and thinking that maybe Quigley Park did not get the full park grant, I don't know. I don't want to speculate. So I don't know if the city manager knows. But I also, I didn't, I just want to say that I didn't object to this order because it's simply asking the city manager to look into it. But I am a harsh advocate for Grove Park, Boston Park, to be fixed. Because that hasn't seen a can of paint in years. And so I, I would really like for us to really start prioritizing some of the parks that are in more denser areas, as well as, as Counsel Recupero is saying. But I do want to get some information about what was spent where, who makes the decision, who does that Mace Todd Lot park belong to. Yeah.
Counsel Robinson?
The Mace Lot is actually a city lot. The Mace Lot was only named after Tommy Mace, who used to be a city councillor here. But the city owns the park over there, which was utilized for years by the Kappa Head Start Program and Neighborhood Kids in, in that area.
Counselor Garcia?
I, I also have to echo the fact that I, I appreciate Counselor Recupero's request for this. However, I would like to propose a friendly amendment for the convenience of what has already been mentioned here. I'd say that's add a friendly amendment to see if city manager can report back a timeline of when was the last time each park throughout the city has been updated and renovated. I think that would really answer some of the questions and give us a vision of what park was fixed when, and, and see how we can prioritize our, our efforts there. So Counselor Recupero, if you accept this amendment?
There's a motion on the floor to place an amendment on the order that include a report back from the city manager and the DPW Director Fidel Maltese to state when, a record of when each park was last renovated.
Fixed. Yeah.
So that we have an idea of the timeline of the individual parks to give the city a better idea of the rotation, because we understand that parks are fixed on a rotation basis. I also understand that if I read correctly, and my recollection is correct, that the park program itself has only a $400,000 maximum amount of money it gets from the state to match. Anything above and beyond $400,000 is up to the city. So yes, there is state money. But the maximum we get, whether it's Volk, whether it's Mace, whether it's Quigley, only $400,000 from the state, and the rest is on the city dime.
Right.
Do you accept the amendment?
You have Counsel Vido.
I'm sorry, I have Counsel Vido.
I just want to add to the amendment. I would like to know the cost, because he's, he's suggesting that maybe they did, I, I want to know how much has been invested into the parks.
All right. So we have two motions on the floor. First amendment will be a request to amend it so that there's a report back to the city council from the city manager and DBW on the history of the parks and when they were renovated, if possible. And the, so we'll have a vote first on that. A motion to ask the report back on the state of parks. A yes vote will, will support it, and no vote is against the amendment. Counsel Naomi Zabat? Yes. Counsel Juiz Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupero? Counsel Leah Robinson? Counsel Calvin Brown? Counsel Damali Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega is absent. Counsel Yamar Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda, yes. Counsel Anya Lopez?
Yes.
So we have 10 in favor, zero against, one absent. So that motion is now passed. We'll move on next to the next amendment offered by Counsel Vido, which asks to, for the city manager and Community and Development to provide an estimate of what it would cost to redo Quigley Park.
Or how, or how much they've invested in it already?
I'm sorry?
I just want the, the scope of services to come with a price tag. How much have we invested in the parks?
Okay. And how much money was used in the last year's CIP?
Yeah.
For a park. Only 400,000. Okay, so today's 16th. Counsel Naomi Zabat? Yes. Counsel Juiz Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupero? Counsel Leah Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado is absent. Counsel Yamar Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Roya Avellaneda, yes. Counsel Anya Lopez?
Yes.
10 in favor, none against, one absent. That motion carries. So the amendment has passed. Second amendment, so the motion as a whole passes. Next item on the agenda, request introduced by Counsel Lopez in regards to city manager instruct DPW Director to look into putting lights to the highest level on Congress Avenue from Hawthorne Street all the way down to Chestnut Street to eliminate the dark area. Counsel Lopez, what is your wish?
Adopted under suspension. If there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
Counsel Lopez asks this to be adopted under suspension. Is there any objections? Seeing none, Counsel Lopez, you have the floor.
Yes. I put this order because I know a lot of people walk that way when they go to the bus stop. And this area is very dark, from Hawthorne Street all the way to Chestnut Street. There's a lot of prostitution going on there, drugs, and all kinds of stuff. So we need that area, really, more lights. We need a, something where people can feel safe. I know that lights not going to be, they're not, not going to stop something, a crime, but at least they feel more secure. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero?
I agree with my fellow councillor. We need more, these lights to be brought up in certain places. A few years back, I asked the city manager to do a study, and then the reply was that the chief of police and they determined where is the bad places. They said where the, the lights need to be brought up more because of safety issues. I can understand that. That's a good, he had, you know, he knows better. So I hope maybe the chief of police will go back around and see if these areas need more lights to be brought up. Because he, he knows more or less, he's, he's the expert on this. He knows that which area is more dangerous and which is more, needs more lights. So it's a good thing. So I would ask the city manager to ask, again, the chief of police, if he can determine, he can give us a list within the city, which areas of the city are deemed to be more, they need more lights. So that, that, that's it. So I, I hope, it's a good thing, and I hope they do turn them on, and turn them up even higher. Our city is good in, in a lot of ways that it does have lights. I've seen it in a lot of other cities, and the lights are not as good as our, our, our lights. But anything could be done better. So I commend the city manager in one way, that he has at least brought up the lights and makes it a better place. But in certain places, the lights are not up where they're supposed to be. So I'm not the expert. Once you told me the chief of police is the one that determines it. So I hope you'll go back to the chief of police, Mr. Kaiser, and he goes and looks, and he tells us exactly what's the areas that we need him to be brought up again. Thank you.
Next order on the agenda is the order by, introduced by Counsel Robinson in regards to the appropriation of 400,000 from the General Stabilization Fund to the Mace Todd Lot.
Page, the front page, and then go to the second, whereas on the second page.
So you're asking for the last, we need to read solely the last part? Why don't I just read the whole? I'll just read the whole thing.
It's up to you.
Yep. Whereas the city owns the space, open space known as Mace Todd Lot, which is located at 57 Crest Avenue and documented as parcel ID 48-108 on the city's assessors' map. And whereas, Mace Todd Lot was dedicated to parkland perpetuity to MGL Chapter 45, Section 3. Whereas, the priorities detailed in the city's 2017 Open Space Recreation Plan include the renovation of the city's most heavily-used recreational facilities, such as the Mace Todd Lot, and to provide active recreational opportunities for all ages and take advantage of Chelsea's environmental, cultural, and scenic resources. And whereas, the Mace Todd Lot is a heavily utilized and popular playground and is vital recreation asset for the city residents. Yet, Mace's Todd Lot's main playground has not been substantially renovated in over 10 years, although its existing condition warrants refurbishments. Whereas, the city, through the Department of Housing and Community Development, filed a grant application to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, E O E A A, park grant program, and was awarded a $400,000 park grant for renovation of the Mace Todd Lot. And whereas, the renovation of this facility is estimated to cost $750,000. And the city will be reimbursed 70%, 70% of the full project cost, up to $400,000, under the park grant requirements. Whereas, the city, because of the park grant reimbursed the city for design and construction, and the city is required by park grant requirements to set aside full cost of the project and certify that full funding, including the state share, is available for the project prior to the reimbursement. The city has funded the remainder of the total project cost through as, through a $350,000 appropriation through the FY 21 Capital Improvement, Improvement Plan, and to ensure that the successful implementation of this and other park grant-funded projects. The funds appropriated through this order for the renovations for Mace Todd Lot may be utilized for all Mace Todd Lot's project costs in the event that the construction cost exceeds the estimated cost. And any surplus funds may be awarded, allotted towards future park grant-funded open space improvements. Therefore, it is ordered by this vote, the city council endorses this project for the receipt of park grant funds appropriates the balance of the total project cost of $400,000 from the General Stabilization Fund Number 7020, designates Mace Todd Lot as a parkland in perpetuity on the MGL Chapter 45, Section 3, and authorizes the city manager to utilize any surplus funds from current and future park-funded improvements for open space within the city of Chelsea, certifies the city manager's authority to enter into an agreement for the receipt of these funds, and directs the city manager to take any and all necessary action to accomplish the project. Counsel Robinson, what is your wish? This order is moved to a second reading.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an order introduced by Counsel Avellaneda in regards to changing the zoning district of the following parcels along Revere Beach Parkway Route to changing the zoning district of the following parcels along Revere Beach Parkway Route 16 to Business Highway BH. Do I have a motion? Council Avellaneda.
Motion to move this to a second reading and to send to the planning department, planning board rather, for a recommendation and if I can speak.
Okay, so we move this to the planning board and councillor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President Garcia. Over the last few years, I've been one to make recommendations of zoning changes, whether it be neighborhood business zones, waterfront, and others, to improve or facilitate either increase in business, regulatory process, and such. In this instance, it has been several years that we've heard, or I've heard complaints from the commercial property owners in the area on Route 16 between Clyde to Webster Garfield, no, Garfield, Garfield, because I'm thinking Webster changes, over in the Route 16. Its curvature and design, most people are familiar with this. It is where Russo's Tux is, the floor liquidators building, now the Tambo 22, there is a convenience store located over there, and other several commercially retail zones. They are presently in an R1 district, which is primarily residential zoning. It is by far our most restrictive type of zoning in the city when it comes to the type of building that is allowed there. Now, by right, you can build a one-family on these parcels, but making this, it has never been residential in that area, and I can't imagine anyone tearing down, say Russo's Tux, to build a single-family home or a two-family home. Quite frankly, one, it would be way too expensive, two, I don't think that they appreciate living on a heavily highway district such as Route 16. The purpose of this was just to, again, after hearing complaints such as Jose Duarte from Tambo 22 about the process of what it took for him to get an occupancy permit simply to occupy what was and always has been a commercial building, it seems that our role in government isn't not only to facilitate these sort of ventures and such, but also maximize the potential of these properties. Therefore, and after having some discussions with John DePree about what is allowed and what isn't allowed, I thought that redesignating this to highway use, given our current zoning structure, makes the most sense. Right now, we only have a sliver of highway zone along Route 16 further up, up by the Stop &amp; Shop. This would just add to it, and I'm hoping to send this to the planning board. Residents can come and speak on it if they have any concerns and questions and such. We hear from, like everything else that we've done with our zoning changes, if they, you know, send back a recommendation to us and then we can approve it. But I think this makes the most sense so that those retail stores are properly zoned out of a residential only and more into a highway or business district that they deserve. Thank you.
Chair recognizes councillor Vido.
Thank you, Ms. Chairwoman. I guess I have questions. And it all makes sense to me. First of all, there's a typo in one of them, I think it's the last one, it says 318 Broadway. It's like the collaboratives address, but it says Beach Parkway. So I know that that needs to be changed. But my, I guess I just have questions. Are there any adverse effects to us doing this? Have the owners of these properties all been contacted? So is there, can we also have a subcommittee on conference for this so we could talk about it more in depth?
Do you accept a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Are you proposing councillor Vido a friendly amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I also would like to recognize councillor Todd Taylor.
Thank you. This is a part of my district, so I would encourage all the residents, especially those on Garfield, I think who have in the past objected to various proposed things going in on Route 16. To please contact me, let me know how you feel about this issue. I think that the major problem with commercial, changing the zoning on commercial is going to be the parking, and I think the residents of the district are worried that their parking is going to be taken up by people who neither live nor work in the city, and the financial benefits probably are going to be minimal to them. So, that being said, I do think that people should consider, depending on what can be put in there, you know, that it might be an added bonus to the neighborhood. I think the addition of Tambo was a good one. I think the neighborhood appreciates it. I don't think that there have been significant parking problems because of that, but I would encourage anyone in Prattville who is concerned about the changing of the zoning in this particular area to please give me a call, 617-872-3174. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. So just to reiterate, we're sending this to a second reading. We're also sending a recommendation to the planning board, and we are also accepting the friendly amendment of having a subcommittee on conference to discuss the matter, where we hope to also invite councillor Todd Taylor's residents.
And also edit the address on the second page.
Edit, okay. We will edit 318 Broadway. Great, that concludes our items for new business. Now, any public announcements? Chairwoman recognizes councillor Leah Robinson.
Just a couple birthday wishes, one to Carla Garcia, who happens to be Ramon's daughter. And Ramon has been here tirelessly, kind of every meeting that we've had. I know he would like to be home celebrating with his daughter, and also to wish my brother Danny a happy birthday.
Great. Any other public announcements? I see councillor Todd Taylor.
So I'd just like to have a moment of silence for the passing of Mr. Mike Cohen of 38 Hancock Street. He was a great guy, and my neighbor and my friend, and I was very saddened to hear about his passing. So if we could have a moment of silence for Mike Cohen.
Thank you, Todd Taylor. So now, we continue with public announcements. I see councillor Vido.
I just want to just remind people that we are still in a pandemic. We are in the second wave of a pandemic that is, the numbers are going up across the country, and so it's really, really important that we practice social distancing, that we continue to wear our masks, that we operate our lives as if, though we are sick, as to not get other folks that are sick. Maybe you're a healthy person, but there are people out there like me that have compromised immune systems, our elders, and so we want to make sure that we're being a good neighbor and taking care of one another. Please, 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 be careful if you need to get tested, reach out to our office. There are resources everywhere, there are food pantries. People work tirelessly to make sure that everyone is okay, but we are asking you to please help us take care of each other by practicing all of the measures that the doctors are telling us, washing your hands and that kind of thing. Please, 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 we are not in the clear yet. We need to stay vigilant when it comes to this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown.
As we said earlier, prior to the election, but I just want to give a big thanks to all, our city clerk, all of her workers on Election Day. I know there was a lot of hype going into the elections about what was going to be done and what was not going to be done. Chelsea did a very great job, not only on Election Day, but a lot of folks don't realize that a lot of the really difficult work was the absentee ballots, the early voting, where you actually had to match up the envelopes with a signature, with a ballot, to make sure it was all counted. Chelsea was selected for one, for an audit to review their tallying and tabulation of the election that took place at the fire station, and they actually met all of the recommendations. They exceeded the work that they did on the night of the election and showed again when they had the audit reviewed. So I just want to thank all those poll workers, the wardens, the assistants, the clerk, the staff for preparing them, for the work that went into it. October 17th, we started early voting and it just went every other day, or every day was there, and it was their people was there. Then at the end of the day, when we had it on November 3rd, you had to match those envelopes with a ballot, with a signature, to make sure you had accountability, and we had accountability here in Chelsea. It was an exhausting process, but we did very good here in Chelsea, and I just really want to give a big shout out to all our workers, the work the polls are doing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. Councill Recupro.
The only public announcement I have is that I will be getting in touch with Eastern Mineral because the weatherman said the weather is going to get cold and it's going to be freezing. So I'm going to get in touch with Eastern Mineral if the good people that they are, like they do every year, if they put salt in the parks so the people of our city can go and get the salt when they need it.
Avellaneda.
I'd like to just announce, or rather, remind everyone that the, those who received or selected, rather, for the Chelsea Eats program, the distribution of the cards started today, and I believe Laura, the assistant to the city manager, came in and announced that close to 250 cards were already distributed. I know they got a lot more work and a lot of people who were looking forward to receiving the card. And again, I want to give kudos to the program, to the city manager who's been diligent on this. I know it wasn't easy. We asked them to get this program off and running, but there were some difficulties in trying to get that card issued, working with financial institutions. It was a lot harder, more difficult than we had expected, but the program's off and running. It's innovative, it's first, one of the first in the nation, and what, again, what hasn't been said enough is, again, that his ability to get matching funding for this and make this program last two months longer than what we had funded ourselves in the city, so that instead of having two months, each month at $750,000 for a 1.5 million program, we now have a $3 million program. And I'm sure that makes a difference. You know, again, food insecurity is not just a Chelsea issue. We're doing the best we can. It's sad to see that, just in the news, in Dallas, Texas, 25,000 cars lined up to get food at a drive-through food program. 25,000 people. These are people who have not been employed since March, just like our folks, so we need to deal with this. And again, it's a, I want to just, again, thank everyone in the city, whether they work for the city or not, who have been showing so much time and dedication to trying to get food to our folks, and I want to make sure that the Tom is known for this, but also all of those who are out there working. Thank you.
Any more public announcements? Councill Anya Lopez.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to remind our people in the city that on trash day, people are taking their mattresses out and leaving on the sidewalk without being wrapped, and the company is not taking those mattresses. So I just want to remind them that please wrap it up with nylon, if not, plastic, if not, the company won't take it. I have seen many, many mattresses. I've been bothering Mr. Ambrosino Fidel Maltese about this, and it's just out of control. So please help. And also, I would like to advise the community of the, that the restoration of cemetery on Central in Shamar will begin soon, actually next week. The side will be prepared and some parking and sidewalk will be affected. So please, you know, be aware that there's going to be some changes, but they're going to try to fix the wall on Central Avenue for the cemetery. So thank you very much.
Councill Garcia.
Thank you. So I want to make two final announcements, especially to our homeowners. I know that we've talked a lot about the opportunities that are available, but I also want to continue to echo that message. There is a deadline, November 19th at 5:00 PM is the deadline to submit your application for the homeowner civilization program. That deadline might be extended, but we have not heard yet from our director, but so far the deadline is November 19th at 5:00 PM. If you are a homeowner who lives in your home, the home that you own, any applicant from condos, one-family home, two-family homes, or three-family homes, you can apply to get assistance from the city through the Affordable, the Affordable Trust Fund, and that ranges, that opportunity ranges from $5,000 for a single home to $8,000 for a two-family home, and $10,000 to a three-family home, and this will help with costs such as paying your mortgage, subsidizing the rent for some of your renters, so if you would like to provide a subsidy for them, you can use that for that. You can also use it to pay utilities, or you could use it to pay your homeowner's insurance. So if you've been impacted by this pandemic and you are within the 80% AMI, I highly encourage you to apply. There's $250,000 out there to help some of the most neediest homeowners. So again, this is to emphasize this money is directly to assist the homeowner with their expenses. So that's program number one. Deadline is November 19th to submit by 5:00 PM. The other opportunity that was actually announced last Monday is an opportunity for homeowners to apply for another specific grant that's being provided by Mass DOT, and that is for homeowners who live in areas that are being impacted by Route 1 and the Tobin Bridge. So if you live in close proximity, right adjacent to that bridge, go ahead and come to City Hall, I believe, room 30, no, room 101 for planning. There are applications available. There is about $20,000, up to $20,000 that homeowners can benefit from for repairs if you live by the Tobin Bridge, Route 1. So we highly advise you to come, grab an application. It's been available since Monday, and it can definitely help you with many repairs in the home from insulation and many other repairs that include outdoor repairs if you've been impacted. So come check it out. We hope to have about 10 homes benefit from this program. It's a great opportunity to really see some sort of improvement to your homes. So those are my two last announcements.
Any other moments of silence? Any councillor Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. A moment of silence for here in Chelsea, Eileen Murphy. Councillor had already mentioned Michael Cohen, Doreen Manberg, Marilyn McDonough, and also, as of yesterday, we know, got the sad news that a senior of 87 years old at 207 Chestnut Street lost his life in a fire. So we'd like to offer him a moment of time.
Councill Robinson.
Yeah, former mayor Butch Brennan also passed.
I'd also add the Chelsea resident from 37 Winesemus Street, Peter Hubbard. He was very much involved in the artist community with Appalina Theater and Charcoal. Please rise for a moment of silence. That concludes this meeting. Thank you.